Okay, it looks like it's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with invocation by Chaplain Brenda Lee. Brenda, if you'd be so kind.
God, we come to you tonight. We thank you for structure. We thank you for order. We thank you for the way that we can best serve you in our city with our city employees, with our elected officials, and how we can be wise and make decisions. And, God, we just thank you for that, for the freedom to do that, for the power to do that, for the strength and the wisdom. We thank you again for your blessings upon our city and upon our people. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 These Act of Nebraska is posted at the wall, on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Consent agenda, all matters under consent agenda are considered by one, by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. All right, item number one is approved minutes of January 7th, 2020. Item number two, place on file ML&amp;W reports for December 2019. Item number three, sent application of North Platt Community Playhouse for Class 1 liquor license, beer, wine, and distilled spirits, on sale only, located at 301 East 5th Street to the Liquor Controlled Commission with no recommendation. Item number four, approve application by Aiden Enterprises LLC, DBA Sutherland Longhorn Bar for a special designated license on March 13th, 2020, from 4:00 PM to 12:30 AM at the DNN Event Center, 501 East Walker Road, for the Ducks Unlimited Banquet. Item number five, approve application by Mid Plains Food and Walleye Inc. for a special designated license on March 21st, 2020, from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM at the DNN Event Center at 501 East Walker Road for a MCF MMA Entertainment Event. And item number six, approved request from Adams Bank and Trust, Equitable Bank, First National Bank, North Platt, First State Bank, Great Western Bank, Hershey State Bank, Nebraskaland National Bank, Sand Hill State Bank, Union Bank and Trust, Wells Fargo Bank NA, and Western Nebraska Bank to be designated as depository banks for the city funds for 2020. Item number seven, accept bids and award contract to Paulson Inc. for the Street Department District Number 328 Downtown Enhancement Project, 17DTR-102 grant on Dewey Street from 4th Street to 6th Street, on 5th Street from Jeffers to Dewey, and 6th Street from Jeffers to Chestnut in the amount of $2,807,621.32, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Mayor, may I request six and seven to come off the consent agenda, please?
Yes.
And number three.
And number three, okay.
Move that we approve items one, two, four, and five of the consent agenda.
Second.
And that motion passes at zero. Okay, we'll move back to item number three. That was sent application North Platt Community Playhouse for a Class 1 liquor license as beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale located at 301 East 5th Street to the Liquor Controlled Commission with no recommendation. Jim, you had a question?
I do, actually, just for clarification's sake. In the past, I think they've, they've applied for a special designated license once or twice, haven't they? What, what has changed? I mean, are we making a tavern out of our playhouse, or what?
I don't know. They're just having more events that they wanted to have alcohol out, and they haven't really said anything specific. That way they don't have to apply each and every time.
Yes, I understand that, but it just seems a little odd to me, but I, I don't object to it. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, what has changed over there.
I, I can't answer.
Okay.
They've been thinking about it for a couple of years, they said.
Jim, I shouldn't at all speak for the playhouse. That's not my intent, but I know in conversations that I've had with some of the members that, well, if you go to Link or near Omaha, you're seeing movie theaters and theaters with alcohol service, and it's becoming more normal to complement that with, with those types of productions. And so I have heard members comment to that effect before.
Yeah. Well, I, I have no objection to it. I just, I was curious about that. Thank you.
Okay, item number, oh, sorry, we need to vote on number three.
Motion to approve item number three.
Yes.
And that motion passes as well. We'll move on to item number six. That was approved the request for a number of banks. That's Adams Bank and Trust, Equitable Bank, Bank, First National Bank, North Platt, First State Bank, Great Western Bank, Hershey State Bank, Nebraskaland National Bank, Sand Hill State Bank, Union Bank and Trust, Wells Fargo Bank NA, and Western Nebraska Bank to be designated as a depository banks for the city funds of 2020. Ty?
I simply just wanted to abstain from this vote due to the conflict I have with Nebraska and National Bank and, and being employed there. So that's the only reason I asked to pull it off was just so I could avoid voting on that item.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
I'd move that we approve item number six, the depository banks for city funds of 2020.
Second.
And that motion passes as well with one abstention. All right, then we'll move on to item number seven, and that one would be to accept bids and award a contract to Paulson Inc. for a street improvement district number 328 Downtown Enhancement Project, 17DTR-102 grant on Dewey from 4th to 6th Street, 5th from Jeffers to Dewey Street, and 6th from Jeffers to Chestnut in the amount of $2,807,621.32, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Ty?
Yeah, mainly what I wanted to discuss was what the plan is to try to minimize or eliminate business interruption, and was that, do any of the different bids have a different plan with that that should be taken into account with this? And in particular, and this wasn't under the jurisdiction of the city, but when the project on Jeffers was, took longer than expected, it was extremely damaging to many local businesses. There were, many of the lost parking, the lost accessibility across the street, those types of things. And so this project is under city control, and I think about how well as a customer it seemed like the Westfield renovation project, which was a private project, was operated in a way where customers could still get into those businesses. And so I'd like to hear about how we see that being managed in, with this particular contract, and then also if the downtown associations expressed any opinions about those plans.
Could Alan speak to that?
Well, Ty, first of all, really, it's going to be up to the contractor to figure out a way to maintain that business, but we have been meeting with the Downtown Merch Association throughout this whole process. And like I told Alan here last week, I said, you know, once we get Paulsons under contract, then we need to have a meeting with them and the Downtown Merch Association, or perhaps we have it in here as a work session, and let them outline to you and to the downtown merchants what they're going to do to try and maintain access to all of those storefronts. This, this is a problem. We knew that. When we got done with the, or not we, but when the state got done with Highway 83 project, I also went to Downtown Merch Association and asked them if they wanted us to do that other block of 5th between Dewey and Jeffers, knowing that they had taken, you know, pretty good hit on that state project. They asked us to wait. So that's what we did. And now we've been able to put that thing together and really address the whole issue. In my opinion, it might be more appropriate, again, once we get contracts signed by Paulsons and actually get them with that, to have them come in and make that presentation. But I know that it's been stressed throughout the whole process that some of those storefronts do not have alternate access into their buildings. And so we will do everything we can to try and, and maintain that access in some fashion, you know, to the best of our ability. You know, when you bid a project like that, it doesn't get so specific as to say, you know, what they're going to do to do that. But again, each one of the contractors in discussions with them have expressed the fact that they understood that that would be an issue. Another thing that we visited with them about was the fact that, you know, we would have, if not weekly, maybe every other week, we'd have the contractor come in and visit with the downtown merchants about where they're at with the project, you know, if anything has changed or whatever from their original schedule. But again, we understand that it is going to be an inconvenience for those downtown merchants, but we will do everything we can to try and, and make it as fallible as we can through there. But we're going to have to rely on the contractor a lot to be able to do that, too. Tom, you got anything you want to add to that?
I'm Tom Warble, the city engineer. We did try to provide so that next to the buildings, we'd leave that five foot alone, so there would be a corridor up and down the street. There are some things in there, a particular location that we plan to remove, but that can be done before the other parts of the sidewalk are removed. So those will be accessible right up to the storefront. There will be some times that we'll put, we know of one water service that we need to accommodate for fire protection, and that will tear that up, but we can work around that even. And we have spent a lot of time with the downtown merchants, talking to them. A number of them are here tonight. And we intended to do 6th Street first, to try to open that up for parking right away, and then make 5th Street parking also east of Dewey, when the downtown itself is being done, so that we can get people as close within a block of the downtown area in any given location. So those are things that we've talked to the contractors about already, and they're, they're of course aware of the fact that we want to maintain access to the maximum extent possible all the way through the construction project. That's our goal, and we understand that some of the merchants down there need that access to be maintained. I talked to one that isn't even a member of the downtown merchants, and she explained to me that the last project that was done down there, how much trouble it caused them. And I'm going back to the 70s at the time, but I said, I explained to her what we were trying to do to make sure that we maintain access to everybody. And certainly, it's worth pointing out that downtown merchants have access, at least equivalent to Walmart, certainly now. Most people seem to want to park in front of the storefront, and you can't do that at Walmart. But downtown, any one place, if you're a block, within a block of a given storefront, you're probably better off than you might be at, say, Walmart, for example, as an example.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Has there ever been any consideration to moving the curb back about one foot? And the reason I'm saying that is, we're getting a lot of four-door pickups, and when they park uptight to the curb, they really do stick out in the street, and if we don't need that much sidewalk, I'm wondering if we could move the curb back just a foot.
Yeah, we, we, we actually included that in the, in the design already.
Oh, good. Thank you.
On both sides.
Didn't we also increase the angle of parking to try and?
Yeah, and flatten the angle.
Open that up a little bit.
Yeah, flatten the angle, and maintain the number of stalls was also a goal. Thank you.
Real quick, before we lose, Tom, what's your estimated timeframe for completion of the project?
It'll take all summer and all the way into November.
Okay.
I'm sure it will. There's just a lot of stuff down there.
Right.
So a lot of utilities and alleys, and a lot of components to this thing, and the downtown merchants are aware of what we're going to do, which our contractors are going to concentrate on paving and, and utilities. But there are some parts of that, like lighting and the poles and the structures of those types of things, that we do not have included in this project at this point. Now, we've already talked about that with ML&amp;W and with our contractors and with administrations fully aware of it. And we've also talked to the merchants about that, and certain lighting layouts that they desire to have down there, we'll try to do our very best to make everything work. And they, I believe they would testify, we've talked to them about to that effect.
Tom, if I remember correctly, there was supposed to be some enhancements in the street that reflect the heritage of our community?
Yes, that's correct.
I haven't seen what that's going to be. Is that for public consumption yet?
Yeah, we included at, in the intersection of 5th and Dewey, a granite, at this point, a granite monument that would be part of the street, but also engraved and with a label, the Canteen District. I know that the merchants are also looking at some identifiers to identify that as a Canteen District. And in fact, there's multiple locations of that that have been discussed. So those are things that the downtown merchants are, I know are still discussing amongst themselves, and, and then we've tried to work with them and, and all those different aspects of things that they thought would be good additions to that area down there in order to accommodate their identification and enhance the use of the area.
Is this going to be a combination of paving, brick, and concrete?
Yes, it'll be brick, driving, lane, and pay, and concrete parking like we did on 5th Street. So that eliminates the concern for getting out of your vehicle and tripping out a brick or something. But the brick will still be in the streets themselves, yeah, on all the streets.
Thank you.
Just one comment. I guess I'm just glad that we have a big reputable person doing this project and not somebody, mom and pop, trying to underbid it the la, you know, with the low dollar bid and, and not do it very well. You know, I think Paulson's has a pretty good reputation for doing good projects, not just here, but I mean, across the state and the entire region. So we're really lucky to have them come and do this, I think.
They did Philip Avenue just most recently, and did a good job with that one, so.
Yep. It's all absolutely great. On Philip.
Just one other statement that I have, too, is, and Al, maybe you can speak to this, but to the rest of the project, you know, like the lampposts and the planters and trees and whatever else we want to do down there, that, that's coincided with Paulson's so that we don't end up, you know, accidentally tearing something brand new up just to satisfy a tree or a planter or something like that.
Some clarity on the financing of this project, which obviously this, this group is a big factor on, but some of the community leadership has come, came to the Downtown Association and said, listen, the, the city's basically going to do the street and below, and you guys as an association need to do the street and above. And probably reality, that, that's real fair. We compete with other, other retail areas in town, as well in the area. And so we're in the process of going to QualityGo, trying to get the money for trees, benches, blah, blah, blah. Everything that is on the plan, nothing different than that was on the plan. And the other comment, I want to make a couple of ones, but the one, Ty, related to your comment, the Downtown Association is taking on the responsibility to communicate to the business sector down there, person to person, to let them know exactly what's going on. And when the curves, curve balls are coming to their block, we'll be there after the management meetings that Jim mentioned to say, hey, they're going to start your block here in two weeks. And, you know, it's not going to be easy for any of us that are located in this, but it's going to be the most wonderful thing when it's all done. Pray to God we have decent weather and we can have this thing done by next November, and we can move on with life with that. And, you know, that's sort of a crap shoot, but we'll do it. Mr. Reicher, you spoke to, I'm sorry, spaced it. You spoke to what with Tom?
About the enhancements in the street to reflect our heritage.
Yes, we planned that on the Downtown Association part of it, and we want to get into the canteen history in our community. And Tom and I seem to be getting to know each other pretty well, but we will be meeting on those details. We've had other things up to this point that were just more important to get the information you have in front of you done first before we have those details. But there will be communication about the canteen. Hopefully, the, this group will, will be cooperative in renaming the downtown areas the Canteen District, and we'll have trees, benches, the history thing we spoke to. We're keeping our fingers crossed that in the near future, or the, the next few years, that we can do some pretty serious upscale artwork in the downtown. But those, those kind of numbers are not in what you're voting on tonight. And, you know, rightfully so. We as building owners and merchants and that kind of stuff, we need to take on some of the responsibility to make this finish, to make it look right. You guys are doing more than your fair share, absorbing all this construction and upgrading this part of downtown, as well as that drainage issue, going through that sector of town from west to east and that kind of thing, so.
I would hope that if we're going to have a Buffalo Bill representation, that we use a historical representation instead of a stylized representation. It seems to be showing up.
We already have a backward horse. What are you talking about?
Doesn't work very well in rodeo, Alan.
I agree. I agree.
Go ahead.
It's just a comment, Alan. I, I was contacted by a constituent who thinks this whole project is just a rotten idea, okay? And he says, downtown's dying anyway, and why are we spending all that money down there? And I said, well, if you can't justify it for any other reason, there's a ton of rotten infrastructure under that stuff. And that's an important part of this overall, as we, as we, as we think about what we're trying to accomplish down there, replacing that infrastructure would need to get done, whether we were redoing the streets or not at some point, because it's falling apart. And that seemed to make some sense even to this guy. So there is still some negativism out there. But yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's prevalent. I think most people are really in favor of getting this thing going. Way past Dewey.
We, as business people in this corridor that we're talking about, hear an awful lot of positive comments, but our percentage will mirror yours. There are some out there that are perfectly satisfied with the way things are. They don't want to deal with change, and they also don't want to pay for it. And, you know, you've been through it on every project. You know what I'm talking about. But again, you know, I appreciate the leadership from the city administration and the council. We've, we've worked, all of us have worked together to get to this point tonight, and we just got our fingers crossed that the project sequence comes through, and by Christmas season next year, we'll be looking at a pretty fancy downtown that will represent what North Platt's proud of.
One thing that I'm really excited about, which I think shows the momentum and the commitment, is that we're continuing to see people that own businesses and younger people buying the buildings downtown and investing in it. Some of them are in the room tonight. And to see the people operating in those businesses, buying those buildings, fixing them up and all that, to me, that shows the, that shows the commitment to where I'm excited to push yes on this.
Ty, are you making any comment about my age and owning a building? I'll have a court cell sign up in the morning.
I'm glad you guys have a balance downtown.
Thank you, guys.
Go ahead. Motion to approve item number seven, bid to Paulson for downtown project.
And that motion passes. All right, now we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number eight is approve mayor's appointment of law firm Waite &amp; McQuah for the position of city attorney effective January 22nd, 2020.
Move that we approve the mayor's appointment of the law firm Waite &amp; McQuah for the position of city attorney effective January 22nd, 2020.
Yes, sir.
I want to abstain from this one.
Okay.
I have a relationship with a lady that works for them.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Jim?
Oh.
I didn't mean to wake you up.
I said Jim about four people turned around. Sorry.
Okay, that motion passes with one abstention.
Terry, you can come up here and sit now.
No.
I was already going to ask him, but you threw it out there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Terry, you're certainly welcome to come up.
Well, are we, are we going to be billed for this?
This is your only, this is your only free night.
It'll all be fun.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to item, and welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consider action on a request from the North Platt Kiwanis and Kiwanis International for $20,000 in New Bern funds to assist them in purchasing and installing the second portion of the playground equipment in Iron Horse Park.
Move that we approve the request from North Platt Kiwanis and Kiwanis International for $20,000 in New Bern funds to assist them in purchasing and installing second portion of the playground equipment at Iron Horse Park.
Second.
Yes, sir.
I noticed one of the items I ventured, I think it was $1,300 for two per region.
There you go. Thank you.
Right here.
Should I see you?
We'll be better.
Was it in this?
Yeah. Oh. What does that mean?
Jim, Linda and some of the Kiwanis are here, so I don't mean to speak for them, but what that is, or what it has been, is that the company that they buy this equipment from comes out and supervises them putting it together and putting it out.
Okay, I thought, I thought perhaps that was a, some city employees standing around and make sure the concrete looks right or something.
No, it's, it's again, it's, it's the playground equipment people.
Jim, is it correct that on the first stage of this, we did a kind of a cost share? And then, and I know they volunteered a tremendous amount of work on this, and so I interpreted this as the second stage. The city's just kind of paying for the materials, but they're still providing a significant amount of volunteer effort, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Someone, did anyone want to come up? Certainly welcome to.
You know I love getting up in front of people. From the sheet that I gave you, I would just point out that that is our first phase that has been installed, and it's absolutely beautiful. It's better than we expected. But to address the labor, when we started this project, we had to come out with engineering equipment and shoot 43 holes for all of these poles to come in. And if we hadn't had that supervisor, we would still be out there. Generally, when they quote something like this, they quote it installed. So these minor pieces of equipment that we would like to install now to finish off the site and make it, make it look finished, the normal installation for that is about $8,700. And we get one guy out there from the same company that we purchased all. This will be number four playground, all of this equipment from, and they work with us, and they don't have to, but they just jump in, and they know that we all have no idea what we're doing. And it looks very daunting when you get 97 packages of screws and 43 packages of cardboard that you have no idea what's in. And this last man that came out was just wonderful. So, and we paid him $1,300 for this for one day, and he did one day free for us. So it's money well spent.
Yes, sir.
Is phase two your last?
Is phase two your last phase out at Iron Horse? Or did you guys have a phase three hidden somewhere?
We'd like to have a phase three. Would you like to have a phase three? It's looking really, really, really nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Linda.
I think we like these type of partnerships all day long. So thank you, guys.
I can tell you that the people that work for the city, Jim and everyone else that's included with the parks department, we have 23 members. And we put in, this will be phase two, but actually four for our playgrounds. We did one at the homeless shelter. The one over at Cody Park is extremely popular. This one is just, it's our diamond. We're just so proud of this location and its conjuncture to get kids that are traveling through on the interstate to play with our kids that live in North Platt. But we get in overhead sometimes, and all I have to do is call, and 15 minutes later, here comes the army. So I'm a little bit sketchy about this retirement coming up, but I'll live with it. They've just been great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that motion passed. Item number 10, third reading to adopt ordinance number 4024, amending section 94.020 of the municipal code of city of North Platt to adopt the internal fire, international fire code 2018 edition. Yes, please.
An ordinance of the city of North Platt, Lake County, Nebraska, amending section 94.020 of the municipal code of the city relating to the adoption of the 2018 edition of the international fire code, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Move that we adopt ordinance number 4024 on third and final reading.
Second.
And that motion passes. All right, item number 11, third reading to adopt ordinance number 4022 to create street improvement district number 329 in Lakeview Boulevard from the intersection of West A Street to the intersection of West Front Street in the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Jim?
An ordinance creating street improvement district number 329 in the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and describing the various streets and said street improvement district and improvements to be constructed therein.
Move that we would approve ordinance number 4022, creating street improvement district number 329 on third and final reading.
Second.
I need to re-vote. I hit that twice.
You deleted our votes.
Yes, please re-vote.
I was thinking about something else.
And that motion passes. Item number 12, adopt resolution approving claims and authorize the issuance of warrant to Myers Construction, Inc. in the amount of $64,314.22, and a warrant to ATC Group Services LLC in the amount of $3,551.75 to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and condition of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21st of 2013.
Move that we adopt resolution approving claims and authorizing the issuance of a warrant to Myers Construction, Inc. in the amount of $64,314.22, and a warrant to ATC Group Services LLC in the amount of $3,551.75 to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21st, 2013.
Second.
And that motion passes. And item number 13, claims.
Second.
Oh, wait, we haven't.
You may wish to vote on this? There you go. And that motion passes as well. Now,
I sure take on a motion.
Motion to re, or close the meeting.
A term, a word.
Call in favor, I assume is yes.
Aye.
Aye, aye, Captain.